All right, good evening. This work session of the Oseo School Board is being conducted at the Oseo Education Center, 324 Sixth Avenue Northeast in Oseo. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district's website within 24 hours after the work session has ended. The purpose of school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when ethical, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. The outcomes of today's work session are board members will receive information on the long-range financial planning budget and building a better future next steps residential survey results. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that board members, cabinet members of staff, four on the table, stating their names, starting with Cory.
Good evening, Cory McIntyre, Superintendent.
Jenny Muscata-Jones, school board member.
Hazel Brooks, school board member.
Kelly Parpart, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Kelly Venusso, Director of Business Services.
John Morstev, Executive Director of Financial Operations.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement.
Heather Deckless, School Board Director.
Sarah Mitchell, School Board Member.
Brian Seerston-Hall, Executive Director of Communication.
Anthony Parnas, Executive Director of Technology.
Tim Palm, Your General Counsel.
Tanya Simon, School Board Member.
I will now ask that Superintendent McIntyre facilitate the opening work session.
All right, well, thank you, board members and cabinet members, and we're happy to be at the Oseo Education Center tonight, and I'm looking at PC because I'd like PC to come up and do an introduction of who you are, what you do, and the services and programs that we have here, and give us just a bit of insight on what happens here.
Thank you, welcome, everyone. We are excited to have you here. The students were very curious about what was going on here today. So it afforded us some opportunities to have some conversations about what a school board is and what they do and about civic engagement. As Cory said, my name is PC Climber. I am the admin on site. I also oversee the CBVAT program, which is our community-based vocational assessment training center, which is another set people probably aren't familiar with, and talk down there and what happened to them. Just a couple highlights from this year. We have, let's see, so a transition is, for those of you who don't know, students that did not graduate off of obtaining credits at high school. So, and it's, you have to qualify. An IPTD determined that they need more services in one of the three areas that the IDEA has determined, which is employment, education, and functional living skills. So an IPTD determines that they're not ready to graduate, and so they come here. And we don't focus on credits so much. We look at, they graduate what's called out for their IEP. We embed a graduation plan in the IPTD. This year, we have graduated eight students already. We graduate when they're done, when they meet their goals, and then they come back for celebration at the end. All eight of those students have competitive employment. We have 20 students currently here that are competitively employed as well. Seven, 20, no, I say 24, I think. 20 students are in volunteer sites that go out and work at, like, Urbana Homes or Goodwill. Seven of our students is in what's called, it's the discovery phase. We work with VRS, Indeed, and students that can't really, won't get a job on their own and probably wouldn't get a job through one of our work experience coordinators. We work with a third-party vendor that does a discovery phase, it's called, and we find customized employment for them. We have eight students in that. I'm just trying to sell our highlights. This year, we add a new class that people are really excited about. It's called Community Engagement. It's our seventh-hour class period. It's our longest class period. That's when students can participate in clubs and committees. We do philanthropic work around the neighborhood. We've gone out and shoveled driveways, raked lawns. We have, we're trying to start a student government. We have a student store, two student-run businesses that actually sell it, Thistles and Threads, I think it's called downtown here, and things like that. So, oh, and we're getting a greenhouse. And, yeah, and starting, we have gardening clubs. If they really want a greenhouse, someone can get a greenhouse. So we have a life skills grant that helps with those kind of things, so.
PC, well, I think it was my first year, we made the transition to have all of our, we, you know, we used 287 for some other programming, and we moved all students here?
Yep, yep, we did.
And changed how we use this facility?
Correct.
Eighteen to twenty, 21-year-olds.
Yeah, I must admit, I'll thank you, the transition is obviously eighteen to 21-year-olds.
Yeah, so that's relatively new, right? That happened, right, before the pandemic?
Yeah.
And then we stopped. Now we're, so there's some newness still to what we're doing and developing and providing the whole service to meet those disability needs that our scholars have. So thanks for hosting us.
Yeah, like I said, everyone's excited about it, so thank you for coming up to my building. Thanks, PC. Thank you.
And we, one of the, PC spent his own share of money at the foundation event.
Well done.
Yeah. All right, well, tonight's agenda, board members, we have our two agenda items. We want to give plenty of space for dialogue and conversation and questions on these two items tonight. Kay's going to be watching for Peter Lovettman, that you all are familiar with, I believe, he'll be coming about 6:45, so we're going to be watching for his entrance here for our second item. But before we get to that, our, tonight, you're going to get our first look at budget adjustments that have been proposed and have made through, been made through our comprehensive LRP process. And tonight's an important step for the development of our budget, as we move forward, that you'll approve in June. So you're going to be looking at budget, you're going to be looking at capital requests, and you're going to be, you know, eventually asked to approve those as well. So I do want to take just a moment to thank many of our leaders who are part of the process, not just those in the room, but about 60 or so others that are involved in our LRP process and have provided feedback and input along the way into our framework criteria. So I'll turn it over to John and Kelly. I'm not sure who's leaving first tonight, but John's going to lead us off, and thank you both for being here.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre and board members. So this evening's conversation is around our fiscal year 2024 budget. It will be divided into three parts. A general overview of our budgeting process, review of budget adjustment proposals, and finally, capital budget requesting, which include one strategic investment being brought forward for consideration. I'm going to refer to your packet a few times as we're going through, so follow on there if you like. The item number one, the first document, which is page two in the packet, is the diagram many of you may be familiar with. This is the Long Range Financial Planning Model, or LRFP, that our district uses and which holds two purposes. A solid data-driven and collaborative budgeting process, as well as a comprehensive financial projection tool. Few things I'd like to point out on this diagram. First, as always, the mission is at the center. This is especially important as we make proposals on how we allocate our limited resources as a system. We need to stay focused on that mission. Gray ovals around the mission represent our work that staff, particularly our budget managers, do throughout the year to develop the budget proposals, based on our strategic priorities of the district and the guidance of the school board. The teal boxes on the outside represent the school board's role in the process. Tonight, we're preparing for work that you will see in the box on the left side of the diagram, specifically for the board to approve the budget adjustments that are being brought forward and that have gone through the extensive LRFP process. Final item to highlight is the box on the top right-hand side, which are the guiding principles for the LRFP process. Next page is an overview of our budget adjustment process and how those requests come forward. As I stated earlier, all budget requests that come forward should align with and support the district's mission and strategic directions. Each proposal that you will see under number six on this page would need to be proposed and evaluated using the pair process or program efficiency abandonment and redirection. This ensures there is an intentional process where evaluating the impact of a proposed budget adjustment. Also, based on guidance from the school board back in October, all budget requests should have a cost-neutral effect, meaning any proposed increase of budget capacity. In a particular area, there should be an offsetting budget reduction in another area based on an extensive prioritization process by each budget manager. The exception to this requirement, which was introduced a few years ago into the budget process, is an element called strategic investment. This is a proposal that does not have a budget reduction offset, but because of the potential impact of that request on the mission and strategic direction, the board would be asked to consider using fund balance to fund the request. We will only see one of these in the capital section, and we'll talk more about that when we get there. Last item to draw your attention to is number seven, which highlights the fact that these budget requests have, on January 20th, gone through our LRFP advisory group, which includes community members for feedback and evaluation, and we'll go through some of that feedback as we get further into the presentation. The next page is the annual timeline of our budget process. Our process starts in April of every year with our pre-planning phase and ends in June of the next year with the school board's approval of the budget. As you can see, there are multiple touchpoints of various staff and stakeholder groups which demonstrate the collaborative nature of the process. You'll also notice that the school board has nine different touchpoints throughout the budgeting process, both to keep you informed, as well as to give you direction to make decisions. This document highlights key dates in the budget process, and items in blue are where the board takes action. And now I'm going to turn over to Kelly Venusso, our Director of Business Services, who will walk us through the base financial information related to the budget process.
So if we go to page five, you'll see the fiscal year 2023 adopted expenditure budgets for all budgeted funds. The LRFP process has been used now for more than 10 years. It's been, I think, over 10 years since it was first designed and introduced to our district. We utilize this for all of our budgeted funds, except for the debt service, which is shown in that orange high section. High chart shows the size of the funds in relation to each other. So we had $337.7 million budgeted for at the beginning of fiscal year 23. This does not include all of our grants, like compensatory Title I, achievement integration, or any of those asterisk or coded federal funds that we have received recently. So we bring those budgets to the board monthly as grant approval is given from the granting entity, which is either from federal, state, or local sources. And as of January, there was an additional $53.9 million in the general fund alone. This year, we're managing 71 million grants. So if you go to the next page in your packet, page six, you'll see what we call the estimated major cost driver document. So to orient everyone to this spreadsheet, the top part of the spreadsheet takes our 23 adopted budget and breaks it up into big broad categories, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and other, and that's $275.7 million for '23. To that, we apply a 3% change, so we would increase our budget by 8.2 million. Then what we start doing in '23 is we start to detail out what becomes known to us. And so again, that planning assumption is 3% increase for all of our expenditures for '24, and then we start to use our prior year trend as a starting point to try and detail out where we'll project to be. So for fiscal 2024, at this point in time, we now have 1.18% identified, and we still have a remaining capacity of 1.82%. So this is in line with where we were in previous years with this document. So then if we go to the next document in your packet, so page seven, this is the general fund five-year financial projection. So just a little bit of history. When LRFP was brought forward, it became to us as a strategic priority with two goals. The first one was to build a framework, and that's what John showed us with the colored boxes and the teals and the mission in the center. And then the second piece was to design a long-range financial forecast model, and that's what we're looking at now. And that's been updated over the years, most recently in this last fiscal year. So next, we're going to review that document for the general fund. So the financial forecast with details has been provided in your materials for your own review and will not be discussed this evening. This projection is a high-level visual organizer for the financial forecast. The projection has been updated with the next five years enrollment projections, which were just finalized in January. So there's three sections to this projection. The top section shows the revenue expenditures and differences and fund balances, and then it looks at a seven-year window, and that window begins in fiscal years '21 and '22 with actual expenditures and revenues, and then the adopted budget for fiscal year '23. And then it has projections for '24 through '27. So you'll see there's some operational adjustments under the chart. This line is to highlight any needed adjustments, and those numbers are included with the expenditures listed above, and the total for all years is listed then to the right. The assumptions section shows the revenue expenditure assumptions being used for '24 through '27. The revenue assumption is based on a 10-year weighted average change in the general formula allowance, which is currently increasing at 2.06%, and then expenditure growth is projected at 3%, which matches that estimated cost driver that we just looked at on the previous page. So this next section shows the budget projection for revenues, which is in blue, and the expenditures in red. The trend lines are the same colors, which show the general trajectory then of each of those items, and you can see by looking at this graph that expenditures are projected outpace revenues. The final section looks at the fund balance projection for that same time period, and the green bar represents our actual and projected fund balance for each year, and then the orange bar shows the minimum required fund balance of 5%, which is set by our board within policy. So again, the trend lines show that trajectory of the fund balances related to that minimum, and then the operational reductions are needed to maintain the board-required minimum fund balance of a percent of 5%. So under this model, we're planning for operational reductions, beginning in '25 of $1 million, and '26, $3 million, and '27, $5 million, for combined reductions of $10 million. And with that, I'll turn back over to John.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier in the budget adjustment, that each budget adjustment proposal or strategic investment proposal needs to go through the pair process to ensure consistency in the evaluation process. On pages, I believe, around nine and 10 of the board packet, you'll see a blank version of the document that budget managers complete, including our questions about the intended impact of the proposal, how the proposal aligns with the strategic plan, how the proposal aligns with our racial equity work, how the budget manager is going to measure the effectiveness of their proposal, what impacts it may have on other departments, and what legal or school board policies may be affected by the proposal. Once the proposal is complete, the pair goes through evaluation with the original department, and then through all budget managers district-wide, and finally, through the LRFP advisory team, which I mentioned earlier that includes some community members. At any point during the evaluation period, budget managers can adjust their requests based on feedback from these various groups. Starting on page 11, you'll see a summary of all the budget requests for fiscal year 2024. The first section represents the recommendations for the general fund, broken down by instructional and non-instructional categories. The middle section outlines strategic investments, which actually, at this point, for the general fund, we don't have any for this year, and also to provide flexibility for increased enrollment next year, and again, to ensure we can provide the same level of services, we have a proposal for a staffing contingency that will only be allocated if enrollment warrants. And then, starting on page 12, you'll see line-by-line lists of proposals, including the summary provided by each budget manager. And I'm just going to kind of highlight the key ones here as we're going through. We'll start with community engagement. Their proposal is to add a 1.0 FTE communications specialist to support marketing and communications need of the community education department. This position would focus on a comprehensive and collaborative marketing plan to support enrollment, promote staffing needs, and provide a comprehensive communications plan. And I would note that this, because this is, even in community ed, this does not affect the general fund, this proposal. As we move to the next area, the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, their proposal is to add 2.0 FTE of continuous substitutes at the Oseo Education Center here, and early childhood specialist education, the ECSE programs, to provide equitable substitute support for school sites, and in doing so, they would reduce current services, contracted services, to offset that cost. Next is Human and Administrative Resource Team, or HART, who are proposing the purchase of a food truck to support summer park and recreation sites and to provide mobile meal opportunities for scholars. The majority of the cost of this is offset with a purchase, we actually sold a vehicle this year that will offset about $115,000 of the $115,000 proposed. On pages 13, as we continue, you will see the color-coded results of feedback from our LRFP advisory team, which includes members of the community. I've said that three times now. Green represents positive or neutral feedback. Yellow represents areas of concern, and red represents perspectives that the proposal may have a negative impact. Proposals are evaluated this year, and were primarily seen as positive or neutral, with very few areas of concern. Specific feedback was given to each budget manager at the conclusion of the LRFP advisory meeting, and there were opportunities to make adjustments if necessary. So that completes our review of the budget adjustment process, and we'll turn our attention now to the capital budget review. Again, I will turn it back to Kelly to walk us through that prediction.
So on page 14, we're going to again begin with the five-year projection now for the capital fund. So we use a zero-based budgeting approach for this fund, which means that any request that we're going to have approved and comes through that expenditure budget is going to be requested on an annual basis, and usually, these items are one-time kinds of items. Sometimes they're recurring items. So the projection has now been updated with the next five-year enrollment projections, just like the general fund. And the top section shows the revenue expenditure differences, fund balances and fund balance percentage, for again, that same seven-year window that begins in '21 and '22 with our actual, and then our adopted for fiscal year '23, and then our projections for '24 through '27. So again, you'll see some operational adjustments under that chart. This line highlights adding $2 million expenditures for fiscal years '24, and then reducing expenditures in fiscal year '26 and '27 for a net change of $1 million. The assumptions section shows the revenue expenditure assumptions of 0% being used for '24 through '27, and then the next section shows the budget projection for revenues in blue and expenditures in red, and then the trend line again shows those same colors with a general trajectory for each of those items. So as you can see, expenditures again are projected to outpace revenues, which is planned. And then the final section looks at our fund balance projection for that same time period. The green bar represents our actual and projected fund balances for each year, and then the orange bar again shows our minimum required fund balance of 10% for this fund. And again, those trend lines show the trajectory of the fund balance related to the minimum. And then, as you can see, we're managing this fund to maintain the minimum fund balance of 10%. So next, we'll go to page 16, and this is the same document we just looked at, but it also includes that one-time strategic investment, which John referred to earlier. So that amount is $461,300 for '24. So the financial impact is a faster reduction of future expenditures, beginning in fiscal year '25, $300,000. However, the total operational adjustments will remain the same for a net change of $1 million. And with that, I'll turn it back to John.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're to the point of moving into the capital summary, and I guess one of my questions is, would you prefer to do questions on the general fund summary first before we go into that, or finish and then come back and do the rest? This one's pretty short. Okay. So like, just like with the LRFP budget adjustment processes, you'll see our capital request proposals categorized by each division. This is on page 18. So starting with community engagement, there's $10,000 requests for adult basic and furniture replacements. With the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, total requests of $4,538,938. And I'm just summarizing here, but it includes capital requests for replacement and maintenance of athletic and activity uniforms, music instrument replacement, a wide variety of curriculum needs to maintain and update curriculum resources, and capital allocations for equipment replacement and building allocations. So move into Human and Administrative Resource Team, or HART, $4,516,462 is the request for maintaining our lease commitments for instructional spaces, athletic facilities, commencement, flex rooms, equipment, camera systems, and so forth, contingencies for equipment, special assessments, insurance deductibles, and risk management, software licenses for safety and security systems, and the addition of digital radios. And then, as we move into the instructional and information, I2T2 section, they have $0 requested, but an offset of using, I believe, $192,000 in E-Rate revenue to use to maintain enterprise technology licensing, support, and internet hub backup solutions, so that's a net zero to the capital fund. So total request so far is $9,65,400. And as we had mentioned, there is one strategic investment request, which is a one-time request above the budget allocation to complete the purchase of elementary and secondary English-language arts curriculum. The last piece of the capital request is the capital projects or technology levy, which There are three divisions requesting pieces of this, starting with DLTL, $270,825 for elementary and secondary curriculum materials. HART is requesting $1,480,000 to upgrade the all-radio systems district-wide to digital. And finally, I2T2 requesting $9,442,980 to maintain their current technology systems, staff, and resources. So next steps in the budget process include bringing forward the FY 2024 budget adjustments and the FY 2024 capital budget to the board for approval at the February 21st regular board meeting. And with that, I will turn it back to Board Member Simon for questions.
Can I just add, for board members connecting the dots on the information, on the December 16th superintendent update, that weekly update, I provided you a little background on that strategic investment. So that outlined in that update that we've talked a few times, it's been an abnormal year, and Brian can jump in on this, as far as the curriculum needs due to the number of areas that need upgrading, need to be addressed due to changing state standards. So we've covered those in our operational plan. So to really make sure we're updated to current best practice in the desire for our, you know, addressing our achievement and accelerating our improvement academic outcomes and literacy especially, and making sure that we're aligned tightly to strategic direction B and the metrics that you'll eventually see in the vision cards that you've gotten to get more familiar with, and just really kind of digging into that culture of achievement through rich, rigorous, equitable, individualized pathways that we've set in the strategic plan. So because it's a bit of an abnormal year, we need extra resources to, on time, to be able to address those. I don't know if Brian, you want to add anything to that, because I know between Brian's team and DLTL and our finance department have worked over, it's been a very busy time over the last couple of months, trying to sort out how we best maximize the resources we have and try to minimize the additional one-time investments that we need, many iterations to figure out what best positions us to be fiscally responsible, but also bring forward what we need, what the materials that's necessary. So, Brian, you want to add some comments?
Yeah, I can just hear Robin Solis says, it's been 11 years since we've had new ELA curriculum, and so much has changed in the past 11 years. And so this is an exciting opportunity for us to think about how much more advanced our techs are and able to represent all of what we need to incorporate today. So it's an exciting opportunity, and it's a huge, it's a huge purchase in a year where it's larger than what we've averaged the previous five years. So we don't expect that to be a trend, but it sort of is a bubble year for us.
And in December, when I mentioned this, at that point, our approximate estimate was about $700,000. So since then till now, the team has worked hard to break that number down.
Brian, can you, just for the community, talk about, because this is the largest amount of areas of curriculum I've ever seen in my 30-year teaching of doing curriculum. So just for the, just for the community, just list, you know, the ones that we're looking at adopting in the next year or two.
So we have some secondary science areas, and Kelly and I were out at Oseo, they're implementing the biology, new biology curriculums, so there's some science pieces that are there. We had the character education curriculum, and we also purchased the Harmony SEL, Character Strong. We have the ELA curriculum. So, I mean, there's three or four major areas where we've had kind of get sort of a bottleneck, if you will, of pieces that we've had to prioritize. And during the pandemic, right, we weren't, we weren't doing that. So now that we are back into the piloting, we can now put those in the queue for investment and purchase. So we kind of got backlog.
Because we do have a program
Because we do have a program improvement process. And part of that process is there's a curriculum that's up for renewal and review every year. But as Brian said, with the COVID and that time that laps, some things got bottlenecked in there. But typically, that doesn't happen.
Any questions?
I just have a couple of questions kind of along that same vein. I noticed that most of these curriculums, I think maybe even all of them, say something along the lines of being inconsistent with completing the program improvement process.
Right, yes.
So I do appreciate that. So that tells me that this is work that we've already been working out. We're not just buying a bunch of curriculum that we haven't vetted. But I did have a question specifically about the purchase resources to support advisory programming at the secondary level. Can you talk more about what that item is? What is that resource?
Well, I think part of the, what they're looking at with the advisories right now is, you know, there's a number of components that they're trying to factor in. So it's mental health needs. They're also looking at career programming. They're also looking at, you know, assessing students' goals and where they want to be after graduation, whether that's post-secondary, whether that's the military, whether that's entering the workforce. So the advisory, you know, right now, we're using ramp up to readiness. That's a big part of our advisory. And that really hits all those components, but we really need to strengthen around mental health needs and, you know, making sure that we're addressing students' needs in other ways, other than just career-wise, and, you know, social, emotional as well.
I appreciate that. That's, I mean, that's a topic that's come up a lot. And my only reservation when I saw that was, will we, what is, is this a curriculum we're implementing, and will we have time for it? Because that's always the question. Do we have time to do all this?
That is absolutely the discussion. And there's really strong feelings, because a lot of time was spent working on the advisory curriculum. And I think that there is a feeling, maybe, and totally understandably, that some of that time now, you know, not all the recommendations are maybe necessarily going to be put forward as they were recommended. And so I know that we've all had a few conversations around that, you know, because a lot of work is being put into this. And it's where is it best being taught? So should advisories be taught through an advisory program? Should advisories be taught maybe through the ELA classroom? Should advisory be longer? And there's a lot of really, that's the good news. There's a lot of really strong feelings, because people are really, really committed to that work and understand the importance of it. Where it may continue to run parallel, but maybe a little further apart in the parallel highway, is where is it best fit in the student's day, and who should be delivering the content, and what amount of time? So those are more the technical pieces, really, that we need to work out. The adaptive pieces are certainly in place.
Thank you. I did have one other question, not related to that, but it is on the replacement of gymnastics, wrestling, volleyball uniforms, and for irritation and activities equipment. Is that for all sites? Because it seems like kind of a small number, dollar number, that we're replacing at many sites. I just was curious.
It should be for all sites. I'm trying to find the exact.
Oh, sorry. It's, it's the top one under Division of Leadership, Teaching and Learning, forty-three thousand dollars for activities.
Yes, that does not seem overly expensive for three high schools.
There's a rotation, so that you don't do them all at the same time.
Correct.
Yeah, but for this year in this budget cycle, that's what we need to continue that rotation. So we can probably follow with, with which, which is that?
Yeah.
Which school outside is it?
Yeah, I was just curious, just because that perception of, you know, some students receiving things. I just wanted to make sure that we're being very intentionally equitable about that.
Yes, thank you, because that's a hot topic. And, and if you recall, Director Douglas, that surfaced years ago, when there may have been some athletic competitions where some schools felt as though, wait a minute, that school has brand-new uniforms, because they were being funded by the boosters, for example.
Yeah.
And so this was a way to make sure that doesn't happen, so it's equitable across all sites. And there is a rotation, as Corey said, so that every, every sport and activity, so including choir robes, you know, every sport and every activity goes through a cycle of when they are funded, to make sure that no activity or any sport amongst the three schools gets anything in a shorter timeframe than another site received it.
Thank you.
I may not call more on that.
Any other questions?
One more comment to the position that is funded through Brian's superintendent communications. We're going to house with Kay.
Yeah, that's a good example, Coria. So like, when you saw the feedback where it was all green, round one was not all green. So just as a quick example. So this kind of shows you the robustness of the process. So the first time we did it, we got a ton of yellow on the one we put forward, and it wasn't because people didn't support it, but they had questions like, what will Community Ed do? Essentially, like, we don't create our own website that's not in alignment with the school district website. So when we got the feedback, we went back, we met with Kay, and we're going to do the hiring and place of the communications position in Kay's department, which makes sense, because that's the communications department. She'll keep it, what's a good word, organized and in alignment, if you could word, so that I don't just do my own thing, right, in communications. And then we'll pay for it, but it'll be under Kay. So that's, so then we came back with those adjustments based on the recommendations. And then, as you can see, we got like two yellow out of fifty, but it was more like half of them were yellow before. So that was a good example. We got feedback based on the narrative we put forward. Some of it, frankly, was in our brain. Well, that's, well, of course, we weren't going to do our own thing. But if you don't state it, when people read it, then they can say, what's going on here? Why would you want to do that? So that's an example of where, I think that's where you're getting at, Coria. We did that, and now it's with Kay.
And board members, you saw last week in that update, how we're trying to do that same kind of consistent approach with the sites. So trying to get some standardization around the branding, the look, the information across the district more consistently. So that's some of the backstory and how that came to this point. Kay will supervise that in partnership with Brian's funding.
Can I just say that I just really love that aspect, because one thing that we struggled with many years ago was working in silos. And we've been working really hard to get out of that. And this is a perfect example of coming together in different departments working together. So I just wanted to say, I really appreciate that.
The fair process really is, I mean, one of the best and last processes we have in our district. And I think it's the right amount of discipline, discussion, and decisions we can. I think everybody, if y'all had to give board members to sit at some point or another on the fair process, it's really very very experienced. So we have something to talk to.
Always welcome.
And then the last thing I thought I'd mention is looking at all of the curriculum implementations from a financial perspective is one thing. But certainly, you know, when we look at all of the initiatives and the work that we've had, it's how we pace that out. Not only is it a financial implication, but it's just how much work, new things, can the system help sort of figure out.
We've talked a lot about capacity. We were talking about that earlier again today. We are very ambitious with a number of initiatives in the operational plan this year, and we'll learn as we move forward. But just to kind of, again, if you go back and look at, even just in the curricular areas that are in implementation issue with science, physics, chemistry, secondary math, and then they're doing ELA in and of itself would be enough. But social studies, health, and science, earth systems, with the science realignment, those are, those are all big things all at once, right? So I appreciate you acknowledging that, because we have been very tuned into our department, just the human capacity. They all want to do this so well, right? And so we've been making sure we're not stretching them too far. I think we have been stretching them, but acknowledging that, and we're trying to just find efficiencies along the way. I think you've seen that as we do the strategic direction updates, you can kind of see the amount of work behind the measures that we're trying to use for accountability. Do you want to add anything to that, Brian? A lot of these are DLTL. Kelly, I'm most excited here.
It's a fair observation. We are, right? And we feel a sense of urgency around making sure that we have materials that staff can use, that help them feel equipped to support our scholars with materials that allow to be more effective. And so there's a sense of urgency about getting those materials in their hands. And we, and in the learning achievement departments, it's a huge department, and we have a lot of staff there to help coach and to implement, to take this curriculum down and end. But it's a fair observation.
Well, we set a staff rule the day yesterday, right? So the PD that comes with new materials, just the learning around our staff and how they're, are we preparing them to deliver instruction effectively too? So it's a complex piece. But yeah, we've all felt very strongly that it's, we had to do it. It's necessary. It's a odd timing element. We had to do it.
And I encourage that, all the curriculum that we're implementing, it's not all hitting one group of teachers. And so it's a lot of work for DLTL, right, for, for administration. And for teachers, it's not, I'm not, you know, as a fourth-grade teacher, I'm not adopting all of those curriculum. So just to keep, you know, that in mind. I know that Sarah and Thomas didn't get a chance to say anything, so I want to make sure.
I don't have anything.
You know, just taking it all in.
I think the only other thing I would offer, Tanya, is that what we learned in the SEO Character Strong curriculum at the secondary level, we got feedback from folks that were around, we need to slow down. And we honor, you know, that feedback. So that's part of our, our continuous improvement process, is that as we see capacity is stretched too thin, or we didn't work everything out, or we need to work out on the front end, we aren't, we like, we'll back up and slow down and make sure that we face the implementations in a way that it can go deep. So I just, I thought about that, Andrew.
I think another point too, Brian, that vice chair, Simon, said brought up, which thank you for acknowledging that, because it is a lot of work. And every one of these curriculum pieces are piloted. So that involves a lot of people. So, you know, we pilot at least two, if not more, curriculum. So that involves a lot of teachers. That involves a lot of meetings. That involves a lot of comparison of the curricula. And it is a lot of work to manage all of that. You know, while we're piloting, we might come across information about something, as we just did, and say, oh, no, you know what, we're concerned about that. So now we're going to pull that, that curriculum off the table. And so then there's a lot of massaging to do around that as well. So it is very robust work. And I, you know, all of you have seen reports done by Jeremy and Robin in the past around the pilots and reporting out on that process, and know how robust that is. And, you know, it is our most important work, and they, they take it that seriously.
And meanwhile, while you're piloting, you're implementing other ones.
That's exactly right. And all that's just that. Correct. And then we're dealing with the kinks, like math, the CPM in math right now, even though that was by far the chosen curriculum. There's little bumps along the way that have to be worked out. So you're absolutely right, Chairman Skater-Jones. That's, that's exactly what has to occur as well as we're piloting, and then researching the next curriculum adoption, and what curriculums we want to pilot for that. So it's, it's a long, it's a continuous cycle.
And maybe just an acknowledgement, too, as you look at these budget allocations, capital really can't really hit, you know, without the referendum passing law, this could sure look a lot different. So you can already see now this coming to life on the things that we need to have in our system, those additional dollar sources. Again, I'm grateful for the communities that have supported that. I don't feel why I did that, John and Kelly, but you live in with the data and the numbers most intimately.
No, I mean, obviously, the things, the community is paramount. I would point that normally, when you get a pretty substantial increase that the community gave us, you see a few years of surplus. And we're not going to see that, which, which is, I would caution to say, we have to be very prudent in what our future looks like, because not seeing that means that, that clip is still there, and it's still very, very present. And we're still looking to be deficit spending fifteen million-dollar chunks that we're going to have to remedy in the short term, because the longer you wait, the more it hurts down the road.
I would highlight on the technology levy pieces, we talked about this in district tech advisory. You know, we target specifically what that increase was for. You'll see in the purchases that are in there, stuff we had in the queue, should it come, overhauling the whole digital radio system. So we've got the security radios that our emergency strong personnel can engage and connect with each other, expansion of, you know, some of our cybersecurity assessments, and some of the other security aspects that we're working with within our system. So you can see those detailed out. The tech levy portion of exactly what we ask for is where the dollars are going.
Thanks for putting out that, that's a really great ad, because that's what people are coming reporting. So anybody in public has access to all of these documents, or we can go see it for themselves, too. Okay, thank you so much, Tony, Kelly, and of course, always to your teams that could all not, I really appreciate it.
So it just kind of dawned on me as Peter Love and walked in. It was about a year ago, we're sitting here, and doing the twenty-twenty-two residential survey, trying to decide whether we should go over referendums, operating technology. And we just went through the budget on how those dollars that pass are being spent, right? And then here we are looking at now our twenty-twenty-three residential survey, and trying to plan ahead on, you know, what's our next steps, and having our, you know, community really kind of help us decide what, what's the next step. So John went through last work session, how we got here to this point. And we got the study groups recommendations, and the oversight task force is now beginning to work and prioritize those and toss those out. I know that's going to get even more serious this week. And that work's going to continue tonight. We'll digest what we think we've learned from the survey, and advise you some time board members in the next few weeks to decide where we want to go, as I think this information can feed in that oversight task force about what to prioritize, what can we, what can we pay for with other options versus, you know, referendum, things like that. So critical information tonight. I appreciate you, Peter, coming and sharing with us. You found the OEC building here. So no deviation from our district office. Nice work.
Thankfully, Kay emailed me. I was coming in hot from a birthday dinner. I would have gone right over there. We had issues, so.
We all need a hand, or Peter.
We need a hand.
But welcome. I'll just kind of turn over to you to start the stuff.
Super. It's a pleasure to be back here with you, one year later. At least it's a different project. We're not still looking at a failed operating levy that we got that through. You got a display up there, and everybody has copies?
No, people.
Okay, so I'll sit down. I won't wander around. As she pulls it up, let's just talk about the methodology of this one. This one was very straightforward. We just talked with four hundred randomly selected residents across the community. The interviews, this is, this is literally hot off the presses. Interviews were conducted between January twenty-third, and they actually wrapped up last Thursday. So this is, this is about as current as, as we get for a presentation for me. The average interview time was twelve minutes. Once they realized we weren't going to sell them anything, or vote or ID them, they were more than happy to talk with us. So the non-response rate was five percent, and the plus or minus out of four hundred samples, plus or minus five percent, in ninety-five out of opportunities. That's the statistical caveat. If we look at the, some of the demographics now, and comparing historically, no significant changes in the demographics. The first set of artists looks at how long they've lived in the community. You have sixteen percent that have been here for five years or less. On the flip side, you have thirty-six percent that have been in the district for over twenty years. Median on this one comes in roughly at about sixteen, sixteen and a half years, a typical resident in the school district. Seventeen percent have preschool children. Thirty-three percent have children attending the Oseo School District. And then sixty, sixty percent are empty nesters. And the caveat on that one is, an empty nester does not imply age, okay? Could have a thirty-four-year-old. It's lack of presence of a child, no age demographic on that one. Continuing then with the age of the respondent, twenty-seven percent were eighteen-to-thirty-four-year-olds. Thirty-one percent were over the age of fifty-five. Median is right at forty-four years old, is the typical resident in the community. Continuing on the next slide, just looking at the political makeup. Going back twenty-eight years with this district, political makeup has changed drastically in this district. Democrats now outnumber Republicans by three percent, but interestingly enough, liberals outnumber conservatives now. That is really a reversal over the course of the years. Ethnicity was asked. Fifty-eight percent indicated what Ethnicity was asked, 58% indicated white, 21% African-American, 11% Asian Pacific Islander, 6% Hispanic Latino, 1% Native American, and 4% multi or biracial. Continuing then with the last set of demographics, just under one in five rented their home. The self-assessed home value, and this always tends to skew high, people always overrepresent, especially with the large property assessment increase of last year, which you're going to see has impacted people's perception of property taxes this time around. We're seeing this all over the state since November 15th, when, when those property tax payments came out. And then the macro issue also along with property tax is the financial situation in the household. This mirrors everything that we have over the last three months now. The financially stressed, just when I was here last year in the district, was 32%. We're up 17 points in the number of people saying that they're financially stressed. Right now, over, just in this year with the surveys that conducted in January now, the median on the financially stressed is 52%, okay? It is at the highest we've been over the course since the pandemic started, okay? Because going back the pandemic, it ebbed and flowed, but to give you an idea of what it was in 2009, 2010 during the recession, we actually had 65% that were financially stressed, okay? We never got to that point of the pandemic and we actually went in and asked questions about why. And what people would tell us is, okay, my income might have been impacted the first year of the pandemic, but my expenses were very, were drastically impacted. I wasn't going, in the case we weren't going to restaurants. So it kind of neutralized the financially stressed category because this simply asks about income and expenses. So right now, that's a cautionary flag and it's a cautionary flag for every district right now across the state of Minnesota. I've been to four districts in Wisconsin, over by Milwaukee, it's all the same thing in the last two months. Male, female, 40, 49, 51, and then the geography, Maple Grove, 46% of the sample, Brooklyn Park 35, there are other areas, 12, and then Brooklyn Center, 70. Normally I ask at this point, any questions on methodology, demographics, or should we just get right into what it all says? Hearing on, proceed. All right. The quality of public schools, we talked about this when I was here last year and you had the, the decline and it's a shift from the excellent to the good. That not, folks have not gone favorable, from favorable to unfavorable, they've become less enthusiastic about the quality of education across the state. And this is consistent, it doesn't matter if it's here, it doesn't matter. E Dina had a 20-point drop, it's very consistent across everything. And I guess the good news is, it's not negativity because the excellent, the only factor was 14% and 17%, okay? It's just that shift from excellent to good is where folks are at. And the overarching concern will get a little more in-depth in it a little bit with the most serious issue, but there's just a lot of concern about kids catching up after they fell behind during the course of the pandemic. So if we go to the next slide, what do folks like most about the Osseo School District? Too open-ended, just to see if anything's changed. Good teachers, 21%, it led the list last time. Then we had the broad curriculum and the variety of programs further down, that's 15% of the sample, pointing to the types of programs being taught in the classroom. And then if we look at high academic standards, college readiness, good education, high-quality education, you have about 25% in the category of actually the academic quality that's being taught. So right now, the academics outweigh the personnel, outweigh the program in itself, but it's all a statistical tie. And like we've talked about, some districts are very focused on curriculum, others, you kind of have always been the statistical tie between the three groups on what's important. If we go, if we ask what they like most, let's ask what the most serious issue is facing the district. First off, you still, you do not have anything that hits 25 or 30, 35%. One in three, one in four people coalescing around a response and an open-ended is a major concern in the school district. You don't have that. You have three items that hit double digits, the large class sizes at 15%, lack of funding at 13, budget cuts at 12, and then we fall into the single digits. The single digits, one unique one that has come up and I find it, I don't know what to make of it, I'm still processing it because it's been pretty consistent for the last three months, it's the staff shortages. That didn't exist last year and if you think of the timing last year, there was a lot more issues at the start of the fall of 2021 school year, a lot more, you know, cabinet members wanting to teach elementary's music, no bus drivers, everything like that. I think the fear was this fall that would happen, but it really did materialize. But we have this growing concern out here. I was at a district, well, the Boulimford School District, there at 15% concern about staff shortages. So I don't know what's good going in the one, I know there's been discussion about the long-term teacher shortage as, as teachers age out, if that's, but it really is 6%. It's not a large portion, but it's something to flag and it's pretty consistent with what we're seeing. Then we just have a whole bunch of other items in single digits from declining quality. High taxes as an open-ended response here, over the past 60 days, high taxes has been 15 to 20% in districts, okay? So you're on the low end, coming out as a top of the mine response. We're going to see there, when we ask specifically about taxes, how they're feeling. How did they think about the quality compared to five years ago? This one, we just looked at a ratio of better to worse, 42 to 10 this time, it's a four-to-one ratio. Last year, it was just under three-to-one. The norm on this right now is two and a half to one, but folks thinking that things are better, better than they are worse from five years ago. And there are districts that have more people saying they're worse than better compared to five years ago. So overall, there is a feeling that things are moving in the right direction in a historic comparison. What about when we compare it to the neighbors? Last year, it was 27 to 12, just better than two-to-one. This time, we're at 37 to 12, three-to-one. The three-to-one is right at the norm. People always tend to, historically, they'll be more judgmental than they are when they compare to the neighbors because they just want to feel better about themselves perhaps. But still, so in comparison to the neighbors, compares, compared historically, folks do feel like things are moving in the right direction. Now, a very statistically significant change is this question, and this is, are you meeting all students' learning needs? For all students, most, some, or very few. You can see in 2019, you have 41% saying all, you're at 55%. You're one of three districts now in, since all of 22 and into 23 that actually have a majority saying all. I mean, all is a very stringent category for folks to give, so that's an outstanding rating. Now, we follow up with those that say most, some, or very few, what type of students' learning needs are not being met? That's what's arrayed on the chart in the lower right-hand corner. And you can see a very clear theme, it's struggling, it's average students, lower income, and at-risk. So the concern, it's evolved over all the years I've been doing this, it used to be gifted and talented, then it was average off the chart because you're doing too much for both ends, now it's average on down, is the concern if they don't fix all students' learning needs are being met. But the key takeaway on this one is you do have 55% of the majority saying you're meeting all students' learning needs. What about class sizes?
When you said one of three, was that left me in the metro?
One of three in the state, yeah, that actually hit a majority. So the perception on class sizes, we used to just ask people about you a class size and tell them, tell us, you know, favorable and favorable. We've switched it now over the past five, six years to actually give them a specific number to react to. And so they're reacting in fact, not what they're hearing at the bus stop, keep in mind, six out of 10 people don't have any children, so they don't have any experience, have them react to a number. So on elementary schools, they were told last year, the average class size in elementary schools was 24 students. The target range for elementary class size is between 25 and 33 students. And then Ash, do you think that this is about the right amount? Should it be lower or should it be higher? On the elementary school, it's the highest amount saying it should be lower, 55%, 45% say about right. We go to the middle school, the, and we look at core subject areas like math and English, told them it was 28 students, and the target class size for the core subjects is 33 students. You see an even split to that number, half saying they should be lower, half saying it's about the right amount. At the high school, the core subjects such as math and English, 27 students, with the target class size for the core subjects being 33, you can see 40% saying lower, but 57% say it's about the right amount. So across the district as a whole, the concern would tip to elementary, then high school. Middle school, it's kind of an even split. Now, one, another caveat on this, when folks talk about lowering class sizes, they're not talking about lowering it by one, okay? And we've done this in, in research, we followed up and said, okay, it costs X hundred thousand, X million to reduce class sizes by one. Would you prefer the district to reduce class sizes or would you like the district to focus on programming? When they hear that number overwhelmingly, parents and the community say, put it towards the programming. Because when they say lower class sizes for the middle school, 28, they're not thinking of going to 27, okay? They're thinking of going to 18. And that's really the, the key distinction to keep in mind is, you know, what will get them to say that they shouldn't be lower in the elementary school? It's going to be to go under 20, okay? It's not going to be a shift from 24 to 23 that they're all of a sudden going to invert and have more people saying that sounds about right.
Peter, when we looked at just the parents, did this change dramatically? So because it includes, like you said, it's people who don't have kids, it's more about they hear and perceive.
I, you know what, I did not cut the data, I can't cut the data and will for you, absolutely. Yes.
I had the same, I've had the same question this whole presentation. It would be nice to have a breakdown of what parents think on these issues. It's nicer asking everyone, but I don't know how an empty nester can accurately answer some of these.
Well, they not, don't necessarily, can't necessarily, but we're looking at a bond referendum to see if the messaging, the class sizes, absolutely. But no, it's really important to understand what the key constituents, yeah, absolutely take care of that in the report. All right, some of the perceptions that we've tested in the past. First off, does the district ask voters for a tax increase only as a last resort? Now, I figured that this would go down since you just asked for a property tax increase, but it actually didn't, it remained stable. So people don't feel like you're coming all the time, even though it was just last year, but there was a period of time, 77%. Do they trust you to do what's right for children? Very strong right now, 83 to 11. We talked about that last year when it was 87 to nine, that you were very high in comparison. Trust to do what's right for children took a hit over the pandemic because oftentimes people thought adults were playing adult games instead of children's games. The norm on this right now, you're at eight to one, norm is about five to one. Have you spent past referendum funds responsibly? Absolutely, 79%. No change even with the successful levy that you had last year. If we go to the next slide. Have you spent taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? We always expect this to go down after an operating levy because really the district's, the finances have been under the microscope for, over the course of the campaign. It went down, but only to 72%. Norm on this right now is 57%. So relatively, it's 15 points higher than the norm. Whatever you've done for decision-making, it's a large statistically significant increase from last year. And this one is you're just satisfied with the decision-making of the school district. Last year, it was 63 to 20, this time 76 to 14. And this is one that there were points during the pandemic that it was 50/50. We had 50% saying yes, 50% saying no. Norm on this right now is three to one.
You must not ask any of the weather decisions then.
On that one, you're damned. No matter what, 50% of people are going to be unhappy. Yep, yep, that's just, that's like the law of pi. And then, do you do a good job of involving the community? Last year, I think I told you in 2022, you're just right off the chart because what happened during the pandemic, the norm used to be 75%. The pandemic made it kind of hard to get together and involve the community for a long period of time, so it actually went down to 65%. It's still about 68% because some districts are still in Zoom, some people don't feel comfortable coming to meetings, those sorts of things. So that 77% is still 10 points higher than the norm, of involving the community in important decisions. And then the last set of perceptions that we looked at, does the district provide a safe and secure environment? This will talk a little bit more in-depth when we look at potential uses of bond referendum funds, 90, 80, it was 92%, it's 88% is statistically insignificant, decrease at 4%, but nine out of 10 believe you do. Are they crowded and recommend the district? No statistically significant change. And as always, the critical question, in this one, I expected more disagreement. This is the question, the schools are a good investment and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. We don't tell them if it's an operating levy, a bond referendum, we don't tell them how much, the key is how many people in concept disagree with that, that's the core opposition. And I expected that to go up and actually remain the same, even after a successful referendum. You have about one in four in the community that are just, would be against any sort of property tax increase. What about job performance? From last year to this year on the school board, it was 65, 19, it's 68, 27. Norm on this right now for school boards is about 58, 40. So the school board is about 10 points higher than the norm. You can see, we talked about this last year also, with the board and the administration, we had high levels of uncertainty. If you look at the administration, over one in four said they were unable to evaluate the administration. That actually shrunk almost by 20 points and it went proportionate to the favorable. So the district administration now, 72, 21, norm on that's two to one, and the administration here is at three to one, better than three to one. And then teachers, no change, 85% favorable amongst both groups. All right, property taxes. You do not have as pronounced of an increase in property tax hostility as I've seen in other districts in the last two months, but you do have a statistically significant increase. The dark blue bar is the perceptions of taxes last year, had 41% saying high, it's now 48% saying high. It's still not a hostile tax climate, I actually, well, South Washington last week when I presented, they had 60% in the very high and somewhat high category. That's a pretty hostile tax climate. So you're not at that point, it's just something to be aware of as you go through the planning process. You have two items that are pretty much out of your control, is the macroeconomic situation of households and residents, but then also the property tax climate. The interesting thing on do they blame the school district, because that, the next, the green bars ask, do you think school taxes are high? You have a lot more uncertainty on this one. And we've noticed this now, we're actually going to do another statewide that we'll share with the organizations, with AMSD and those sorts of groups this spring again, we want to go a little more in-depth. It almost feels like people don't know who to blame about their property taxes, they know they're upset about them because you can see, we're up to 18%. Typically, you have about one in 10 that say, I have no idea that it's, there's a difference, some goes to county, some goes to schools. But at this point in time, they're still not associating the increase in property taxes to the school district. And still, it goes from 48 to 34%. So that's the good news for you, the bad news for you is, for the most part, you're the only entity that people can both know on a property tax increase and cities and counties pretty much have free reign. An overall evaluation then of the financial management, it was 69%, it is 63% now, that's not surprising in light of going through an operating levy, norm on this right now is 52%. So as we look at this as a whole, the atmospherics in the district, and go to the next question, and where the rubber hits the road. And this is, when you think of the property taxes you pay and the quality of education provided, how would you rate that value? You had 71% rated favorably, 21% rated unfavorably. Norm on this is two to one, you're better than three to one. So even at a time where there is concern on the macro So even at a time where there is concern on the macro quality of education, they haven't gone unfavorable, it's less enthusiastic. In a time where you have increasing property tax hostility in the district, it's still, the value is there in the minds of residents, okay? The district has a reservoir of goodwill and it's interesting. Normally, when you go through a campaign like you just went through, you burn political capital. You know, the key on these surveys, this set of questions is to understand, do you have political capital to burn? And, you know, I've gone into two districts in January and said, you don't have any capital to burn, much less they have to be able to start talking about a referendum and they've had to delay on that. You did not burn a lot last year, okay? There is still political capital out there. There's fiscal credibility out there and there's a trust. And especially you see it in that increase in the decision making. Now, let's turn to the potential referendum. This is, if you hear the districts when they ask for a property tax increase, are you for all, against all, or are you persuadable? There's really, there's no change. The only change is against all went from 24 to 23. The for all went from 26 to 25. It still nets out as a plus two, 2% more people with core support than core opposition. But the key is obviously going to be the 51% that are persuadable. Let's talk a little about perceptions in the district. Over the past five years, do they think that housing growth has increased? 68% said yes, 30% say it's remained about the same. When we asked though about student enrollment, they don't necessarily believe that. You still have a majority, but 53% say it has increased, 35% said it's remained the same, and 12% are unsure. So that's the historic view. They know the housing growth has happened. It's a little softer on the feeling that the student enrollment growth has happened. Now, if we go to the next chart, what do they expect to happen in the next five years? This one, folks are pretty much married. They, 65% say housing growth will continue to increase and 62% say student enrollment growth will increase. So they might differ a bit on the historical, but they're still better than six in 10 saying, yes, the expectation is the growth will continue along with the student enrollment growth. Now, the split is the prevent, so the disconnect is, does the district have enough space for five years from now? 57% say yes, the district does. Only 18% say no, and 25% are unsure. So that is a communication opportunity to share, especially in certain parts of the district where buildings are in overcapacity, the space issue. So you really don't have to bring them along with the expectation of what's going to happen. You have to show them what it means and the impact of the student enrollment growth in the buildings. So then when we ask folks, how would you evaluate district buildings and facilities? They're very favorable, okay? 85% rate them excellent or good, 9% say only fair or poor. And on this one, you actually have more people saying excellent than good. So really a good understanding and communication of purpose. And you know, you're going to see it when we get into the specifics. People still are willing to see that there's room for improvement as we go through the list of items that we tested. What's their perception on flexible classrooms? We read them a statement of what this means. Been asking this for 10 years now. And the first question is, how important do you think the flexible classroom design is to student learning? So do they think there is a link to the classroom design to student learning? 80% think it's at least somewhat important. 19% say not to or not at all, with 30% saying very important. So overall, folks do see a link between learning and classroom design. Do they believe then that the Oseo School District buildings currently provide sufficient flexible learning spaces? Yes. 59% indicate that's the case, 20% say no, and 21% are unsure. Keep in mind, six out of 10 people don't have kids. And the vast majority of them probably have never been in a school district building before to understand, you have to show them what it means. What about equity? How important is it for the district to ensure equity between buildings across the district? 82% indicate that it's important, 18% not to or not at all, with 32% indicating very important. Do they believe that equity exists between buildings? Yes, they do. 72, 73% say yes, 9% say no, 18% are unsure. So on both of these, if it's a discussion and part of the planning with the bond referendum, the equity piece and the classroom design piece, you don't have to break people to the point of understanding that it's important. You have to make them understand the needs in the district to achieve a flexible classroom learning system and equity in the buildings. When we ask the specific question, do they believe there is equity and programs have offered at all of district middle schools and high schools? Yes, they do. And so similarly with the facilities, the programming, you're going to have to show them what it means if there is an equity. So when we do our let's make a deal question, would they support a tax increase for facility needs? And we move up and down. First off, you still only have 28% say nothing. So remember, the core opposition started at 23%. We flushed out 5% Minnesota Nice, who didn't want to tell us that they didn't support anything. And so that's well below the 35% threshold we're looking at, okay? It remains, I believe last year you were at 26% nothing. We have 29% then that say $7. And then we have 31% that say $14. Median comes in roughly about, for those that are willing to see a property tax increase, about nine bucks a month as a starting point, okay? That's not set in stone, that's only meant to establish a guardrail for you to realize the further you go away from that, it's going to be, it's going to be really important what the plan includes. And then realize also the macroeconomics out there that are out of your control. So in looking at the elasticity, we then went through the list and asked, would you support a property tax increase for this purpose? I've arrayed this by strong support because you actually have majority support for everything. But there's a clear intensity on the support. Safety and security at Maple Grove, safety and security updates at Maple Grove High School in Park Center, it's a no-brainer, 82, 83%, okay? And that's not surprising. And that doesn't mean, as we saw earlier, you still had 88% say that you provide safe and secure learning environment. We're at the position in this really, you've already just doubled down on what happened in Newtown, Connecticut. People will say, yes, they provide a safe and secure learning environment. They will be willing to invest money to be more safe. You can never be too safe, we're finding out. So if, that almost always leads the list. It does here at 83%. Career technical legislative, CTE spaces at the high schools, 74% support with 46% strong support. That's not surprising either. We've really seen a way to push and I don't know, I think there's a whole bunch of things in play, the high cost of college, all of those sorts of things. But a real desire out there for public schools to expand career technical education, that it's just not college readiness, it's career readiness. At 74%, at 46% strongly support. Specialized classrooms, 71%. Repurposing the elementary school for community education purposes, 68%. Steam spaces, 72. Then we get down, I'm sorry, media space center and libraries, 69%. Flexible learning spaces, 67. Classrooms at Maple Grove High School, 63%. The new elementary school at 56%. And then expansion of cafeterias at 62%. Actually, the lowest total support was the new elementary school at 56%. It's just the intensity on it. And it was, that one I did check because I was curious. It was Maple Grove that was more strongly supportive of the new elementary school, even though we didn't tell them that the new elementary school would be built in Maple Grove. It was just construction of a new elementary school. So as we look at that as a whole and relate that back that, that, okay, we've done this. So overall, all the components we talked about, do they sound like a good idea or a bad idea? 68% say a good idea, 27% bad idea, 5% are unsure. We look at intensity, there's not a lot of intensity on this. 14% strong good idea, 3% bad idea, five to one. Overall, an evaluation, if you look at it, there's elasticity in that number because you have such high levels of support for so many items. Especially, you know, at the top when you're looking at safety and security, you're looking at CTE, the steam spaces, all of that. You know, could you double it? I wouldn't necessarily recommend that simply because of the economy, okay? If everything was going well, this would be very similar. I always use Richfield as an example back in 2017. I presented the survey there, supported about 10 bucks a month. They had support for every single component that we tested, just like that list, at 66% or higher. And there were 14 things, it was just off-the-chart support for everything. It actually went for $31 a month on the average house in the past 70, 30. Because the elasticity was there because there was such high support for everything being discussed. But in 2017, it was a very different macroeconomic situation than we have today. It's kind of the daffner, I think, just to put on there to make people realize as you go through the planning. And then finally, communication. Last year, it was 81%, this year it's 84%. Not a statistically significant increase, I'm sorry, Kate, but it's 84/60, so it's better than five to one. Norm on this right now is three to one, positive to negative on this. And then finally, where are folks getting their information? The district website and then your grapevine, it continues to be alive and lush. It's small town out here, but it's becoming small town everywhere. And really, I think a lot of it has to do with the, kind of the demise of paper, newspaper for the most part. I mean, you have 16% indicating newspaper, 13% newsletter, 12% mailings. But especially amongst older residents, there's not a lot of newspaper coverage for them to get. And so they really are relying on the grapevine much more than ever. And then finally, how do they prefer to receive information? This one, if we just look at electronic versus print to give you an idea. So the website, 16, email, 16, social media, six, e-newsletter, two. So we have, excuse me, 40% saying they want something digital, something electronic. The flip side, something in their hands, newspaper, mailings, and newsletter, 43%. So you really still have this tie of half the community wants print, half the community wants electronic, and you do have 10%, but really 9% that really just do want to hear it from somebody else. That's really what's changed. You know, the growth of the grapevine now, it used to be, I grew up in a small town in Wisconsin. People said they got their news from somebody else and they always wanted to get their news from somebody else. In the metro area, for a long time, they didn't want to admit that that's how they wanted to get their information. Now we have more and more people willing to say, yeah, I do prefer to get my information from somebody else. So, I think that could answer any, oh, no, there's two more. I'm going to get to communication. These two, I'm sorry, this is what you call a pollster's worst nightmare. 38% support adding the seventh board member, 43% say no, and 19% are unsure. Absolutely no consensus, a 40/40, 20 split. And always, I mean, that really is a pollster's worst nightmare is giving you information. And similarly, switching from at-large school board representation to a board system, 42 yes, 39 no, 19% are unsure. You know, one in five just have no idea. And so, I mean, that's really kind of the group to focus on. But either way you go, you have four in 10 that are either with you or against you on the decision. There's no consensus on either of those policies, which is and I was going to look in the archives because I believe we asked adding the seventh board member in this district, 95, 96? But, I mean, you don't have anything to read a floppy disk anymore. And so, yeah, and so I'm like, I'm looking, going, I can't access anything from 98 earlier.
I think Costco can fix that for you.
So you'll get us, Peter, you'll get us information like, like the parents, like just follow up the parents?
Yep.
On the at-large and the seventh board member, can we also follow up demographic area and race?
Sure, yep.
I appreciate that.
Peter, I have a question at the beginning, page 30, we're back to page 30. When it was talking about the lack of funding as the most serious issue, what would that specifically be referring to, the lack of funding on what specifically?
Well, the perception that the school districts still don't have enough money. When we asked the question, is your district adequately funded? I believe, I did not put that chart in here. You had about 40% that said no, even though you had a successful referendum. So it's still a perception. And part of that's driven by conversations that you haven't had yet, or being had at the state level, where they're saying districts aren't adequately funded. So now there's discussion on fully funding and everything like that. It feeds the narrative that continues. And so that's pretty consistent, anywhere between 10 and 20% on school districts will have people saying lack of funding is the most serious issue.
And that one was open-ended, right?
That's open-ended, they can tell us anything.
You didn't give them options on that.
Nope, no. And they can tell us six things. We go the first thing, that's what you're seeing arrayed on the chart, is the number one thing they say.
And I'm wishing that Jackie's to request, can we also get a geographic breakdown of the new elementary school?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, 100%. With all that, all the effort, because there's some very specific classroom conditions at Maple Grove High School, those are some of the things, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Can I summarize some key findings and will you tell me if I'm gathering this? So the climate we're in, we are seeing the economy and property tax. Climate is working against schools in general, right?
Yes.
That financially stressed feeling. What we have working for us is a number of things. We're viewed as strong in these areas, decision making, financial management, job performance of the board and administration. Schools are a good investment to our people pool. We increased dramatically meeting student needs, that's a positive perception, it was a 14-point one of three in the state. Strong, favorable building and facilities and that they're safe and secure, right? So then when we move forward looking at our facilities, we need to tell the story if we want to go there, why we need to make changes, mainly for programming. Now, there's some capacity pieces that we need to flush out and tell that story better.
Yep.
Because that fell a little flat, I think. Especially with the perception that we're meeting student needs and we've improved there, right?
Yep.
And then I just, that communications piece. Despite a lot of, you know, noisy competition the last few years, we're all above average of what F51 versus 311 in the state. So we are finding some ways through, getting our messages through.
To cut through the last of.
Am I getting some of the big things here?
100%, I don't need to write the report. No, I think on a global scale, you're absolutely right, those are the big takeaways. I think, you know, in planning and going through this, you don't have any of what the typical declines that we see after a district has a successful referendum or an unsuccessful referendum. Because you just, the spotlight is on you for that period of time. You don't have any of that. The issues really, if you think about the bond referendum, it's not that you have to change their minds, it's you have to show them, okay?
Felix, what you told us last year, oddly enough, that's Felix, what you told us last year, oddly enough, last, I can't remember what the number was, but we ended up landing on seven dollars and two dollars, so it was nine dollars. And I wrote down, you said nine dollars.
It's about nine dollars if we look at the household, take out those that say nothing, and those that give a dollar amount, it's about nine dollars.
And I hear you that it falls down dramatic, I don't know dramatically, but it falls off after nine dollars, like, where's that?
The one caveat I have this year is because of the macro things out of your control. If I look at those components, at the individual components of the property tax increase, three years ago, I had said you could go for double.
And you told us about brush fire, too.
Yeah.
Really into our referendum.
Yeah, there's a potential that you could do this, but I'm getting old and very nervous about everything, and the macroeconomics really concern me right now, because I'm seeing a lot of things in the data, just in people's attitudes and opinions, and especially the property tax hostility, because that one, I expected it. I don't think a lot of people, I mean, everybody got their assessment last spring and thought, oh my gosh, everything traded when I'm twenty-five percent, and then they got their statement in November and then realized, oh, that means I'm going to pay more, and they hadn't made that calculation. And I really do think that that is part of the financially stressed situation in some of the households that we're seeing, because even if you look at it, macro inflation numbers, the stock market's been pretty stable, I kind of ebbs and flows and change public opinion, too. But one thing that is in your favor that doesn't concern me as much is what they do in St. Paul. Clients that are doing operating lemmies, looking at operating lemmies this year, I think they're going to have a very difficult time, especially if Governor Walz runs around and talks about fully funding education, okay? That's going to do nobody any favors on that one, but this is a bond referendum. This is different.
Well, I know you got some others, so one last, and I'll be quiet. You, when you look out at the next three years and the potential touchpoints for a referendum, November twenty-three, twenty-four, five?
Oh, twenty-five, I'm just kidding.
You mentioned, I'd like you to share, has your thinking changed at all in that? You know more now, right?
Yeah, I mean, twenty-two was a test case, I mean, twenty-one and twenty-two are difficult things to evaluate, because there's so many factors outside of it. Normally, off-years are better, historically. Then we started to see you had less people turning out in off-year elections, parents still remain very difficult to get out in off-year elections, that hasn't changed whatsoever. But evaluate, if you look back at those that went in the fall of twenty-two across the state in Minnesota, forty-one failed, forty-one passed, forty failed, okay? That was, actually, there was one renewal that failed, I believe in Staples, oddly, for the first time in the state in like fifteen years. Part of that, though, yes, you had the whole clutter of the governor's race, and everything involved in that, but you also had the continued, you had other issues in school districts being brought up, that people were going to vote at the polls on, and that was the impacting operating lemmies and bond referendums at the same time. So I still think, I just, I think twenty-four is a no-go. Even though I'm tending to like more people out, I think that is going to be impossible. I mean, I don't even know if somebody running for Congress can get through the mess that you're going to have with all the campaign commercials, everything going on just for the presidency. And it was, we saw it was hard enough, I mean, in your brush fire survey, I mean, what, we were three weeks out and fifty percent were already were having an election, even at a time, what was turning out, seventy percent in the district, so it was hard to cut through. And that was consistent, the period of the brush fire, limited to the brush fire, it's about half the people were aware that an election was even happening, so it was even hard to cut through a governor's race and what happened here. I think it's going to be more impossible in twenty-twenty-four. So I would recommend right now twenty-three to twenty-five for planning purposes, and, you know, based on how it lays out for facilities and when you need them to come onboard. But there's nothing in the data that indicates that you're going down the wrong road in planning, or this is something that you should wait. And like I said, I've told two districts in the last month, there's, I'm sorry, there's just no way you can do this, and they kind of look at me, you know, just, this is, you paid me for, do the day that can give you my payment, and this is where it is. So I don't see any red flags for the actual specifics of your plan.
So I was going to say, just to give some context, because I got Kay forwarded your information to me, so I quickly bounced off Heller's, just to see where we were at, and one of the things that's a big advantage for us is, we have a lot of flexibility in which parts of the requests we have are, fall under long-term facility maintenance, and which parts fall under a bond. So I guess my thing would be, if I said we can cover ninety-nine percent of the requests on that list in the ten to twelve bucks a month, tax impact range, what would your recommendation be?
I would say if it's in the ten to twelve buck range, and it's everything on that list, and I'm assuming, knowing the ballpark price of what an elementary school costs, you know, the elementary school is the only one that could kind of become parochial. But in looking at what you're asking, the other changes in the district, it's kind of like a no-hat event, where there was something for everybody. And it's going to be important in this district also to show, okay, yes, there's a new, I mean, a no-hat event, they built, both their elementary schools were on the north side, okay? It had nothing to do with Champlin, Brooklyn Park, anything like that, but the schools on the Champlin, Brooklyn Park got things, I mean, those were approved also. If you show the whole, I don't see, you know, you don't have any red flag, and I don't think that the elementary school's going to be sixty percent of the bond cost, and that would really be the only caveat as a concern, so, and I think that is a reasonable approach as you go through this, the facilities planning.
Can you suggest November over, because I mean, we have some other options with the bond, too, in other months?
Yeah, yeah, not August.
Yeah.
I couldn't convince someone Washington of that last year, as hard as I think so. I, I think it's when timing makes sense for you. I think you could do February, I don't know if there's any, where the primary is, I have not looked at twenty-twenty-four, and how it falls in for sequencing. It's, like I said, it's hard to get parents out regardless. It's harder to get them out, well, it's impossible to get them out in August because they're gone. It's very hard to get them out in May. It's still hard to get them out in November, but it's less hard. So I think I would leave towards November, than some sort of non-November date.
Just a quick one, I was just wondering if we have any idea how many of the four hundred are active voters?
We didn't, we didn't ask it on this survey, because we didn't have any specific plan. And so would we, I think the intention is to do a short brush fire, when you have the plan, we test it, and then we're going to look at likely voters. And then actually do a larger sample size, because you're going to have less likely voters in an off-year, so I should go up to six to twenty-five, and I'll put it that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
If November, what, when's the brush fire, is that like September-ish?
We're going to do two brush fire surveys, we're going to do one this spring yet.
If we're sure, yeah.
We're going, I think it was in March, yeah, that we're planning it, so before we have our decision for, that comes here, our recommendation, we'll have that information as well, and then also the brush fire.
I think one of the things that we tend to struggle with is knowing on an even year is difficult to get the message out, but we definitely want good voter turnout, and do you have any insights or from your other survey, how people feel about off-year elections versus on-year transparency, credibility, is there anything that comes out as a pattern or no?
No, you know, I mean, that's hard to quantify in the sense of a survey of, you know, would you prefer this or that, keeping in mind that, I mean, on voting, and when you ask them about their behaviors to start with, you already have the halo effect, you know, people don't want to say they don't care about voting, just like they don't want to say that they don't recite them. And so, I mean, that is, that's in play on it. And so to truly engage that, you know, it's interesting. Some district, a lot of districts have switched over, they used to be for school board elections, it was all off-year elections, and then they went to even here in order to get more people to the polls and vote, but then you still had half the people mad that they made the switch. Also, it created more issues and argued that you wanted more people and more transparency in the process. I mean, I really do think there's something to be said at the end of the day, I mean, on something important, because people do care about their local government, much more than they care about St. Paul, and miles more than they care about Washington, DC. Oh, by the way, I might be better going to the state than you, I'm sorry. But it's really, I think it's always best to have, okay, let's decide a city council and a school board, and where you're not inundated with all this other stuff. Because for the most part, school boards and city councils are apolitical, won't say non-political, but that aspect, and then similarly, I mean, do you want more people with less information about specifics, because you had that last time, you know, the fifty percent of people where you had an election and turned out with seventy percent, which means twenty percent of people showed up happy, no idea that there was a referendum. I wouldn't necessarily argue that's a good thing, as a whole. So, you know, I think it cuts it off, I think, though, everybody that you make happy with more people out there, you make unhappy, by then people saying, well, the message doesn't get out, people don't understand, and those sorts of things.
I do think it's pretty incredible that we didn't see drops when having to start a referendum, which I do think speaks to what K and the team and everybody did, to ensure that the message was out, that we were constantly giving opportunities for the public to participate, actually, or in person, so I do, I do have some congratulations to you, K, and your team, and your markets. Any other questions, comments?
I guess I'll just add that, I think overwhelmingly, I agree with Director Simons, the data that we have is positive, for the most part. I'm really happy to see that we did see those big decreases, I honestly thought that we'd see more of that, so I am relieved, but I feel like particularly, really what you said is we have to show why these things, because it seems like there's a disconnect between we want to have good functioning schools, and we know that they need these things, but not realizing what exactly it is that we need, and showing them why we need these things, the things that we're asking for, if we were to go for a bond referendum, I think that's really the, comes down to our marketing aspect, really, is how do we demonstrate that some of our buildings have kids who are learning in the hallways because they literally don't have space, and other buildings have more space than they need, and how can we, you know, meet everybody's needs across the district? So I think that's really on us, how we portray what our district needs are, and how we include everybody in this, like, I think, I can't remember which district you said, but another district did a similar thing, where all, everyone got, I know, yeah, got something. I think that's really important to our community, is that we make sure that everybody feels a part of this process.
One hundred percent. Especially, I mean, you have geographic divide, so I mean, these larger districts, Apple Valley, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan, with their big one coming, they have, they do the same thing in their bond referendum. I think there's two hundred ninety, whatever it is, it's a lot in that sense, but when you have this growing district, and there, the focus on growth is all in Hastings. Well, I mean, a person in Eagan hasn't been to Hastings for the most part, ever, so it's that connection, and to show people, but then also that it's just not about things in Hastings, we're actually fixing things, if you're here in Maple Grove, Brooklyn Park, or what have you, that there's a connection. The good thing, to your point, though, is there is agreement on what's important, okay? The equity is important, the classroom design is important, those sorts of things, you don't need to convince people of the importance, you need to show how this is the solution to the problems, to fix what's important to you.
I guess, sorry.
I was going to say, it's really about telling your story and showing your reality, because I was in Richfield until twenty-seventeen, and right after the vote happened is when I came to Osceola. So, you know, I like to see how we saw the perception around flexible learning and instructional design spaces change, because when I was in Richfield, when you talked about instructional design, flexible space, the community really didn't understand what that meant all that time. We've come a long way since then, but there's still a need to tell the reality and show that, and definitely families that are connected and have students in the school, see and understand that flexible design and some of those other elements that are in there, more so than someone that, you know, the last time they sat in school was, you know, potentially at college, or when they were in high school, and it was the same design as what we've had for, you know, a very long time in schools.
Yeah, districts have had to do, I think, the first, we wrote this paragraph on flexible classroom design, I think we called it twenty-first century learning. It was for a Dyna School District, I think it was two thousand nine, was the first time we used that phrase, and now it's kind of developed and everything, but you've had to show them along the way. I always think if it goes back to, you know, old enough to talk about when we switched over from chalkboards to whiteboards, with technology lemmies, God, I didn't know this was... That we actually, you know, there were districts that would bring senior groups in, and show them what a classroom looked like with a whiteboard, two thousand one, two thousand two, and how it had changed, just simply, I mean, it's, it's ambiguous, well, they don't know what it is, I mean, so it's really interesting, it's a teaball over the years, but absolutely, flexible classroom design is definitely the new, and people get it once they see it.
Yeah, I was going to say, it needs to be visual, video, pictures, whatever, we can make it be visual.
Right, and remember last time, we talked about having at the sites where we're going to be doing work, yeah, renderings of what's going to be done, so everybody that comes into the buildings can visualize and see.
And here, you underscored what we saw in our last work session last month, on how all those recommendations touched literally every site across the district, that helps increase the likelihood of success. And then you got some things to work with in oversight, we'll probably look at this, too. I was kind of surprised at how tight, you know, slide fifty-one, where you kind of ranked them, they're pretty tight, you know, I know that no one, no one just goes down less, but some are just a couple percentage points, so I think that's kind of, I know John's wheel's already spinning, on maybe what can be LTFM, we don't need to go over four hundred and seventy million like rate, we can probably tackle some of those things through, a long-term plan, and then what are the things that maybe have a higher likelihood of success with voters, right, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, this, and in looking at that list, you know, there's not a deal filler out there, but there's really, there are items that are leading indicators, very clear themes, where folks are willing to, and so if that's eighty percent of the funding, it should be, the ten to twelve dollars is going to be reasonable.
I hope we get videos of the four principals that were here last time, and Adrian can just knock it out of the park, tell importantly, because I really do think the public doesn't quite understand how game-changing flexible learning is, in fact, I think some teachers don't know how game-changing that is until you have it.
Like Director Douglas was saying about the disconnect, I think the word of mouth is so powerful, you know, I'm a parent, shifting from parent to school board member, and after joining John and Thomas on the ECPAC committee last night, and just having this realization that at the high school, they're overcapaciting cafeteria, well, I didn't even know that, so I asked my high school daughter, Maple Grove senior, and her friends, and she said, yeah, there's all these people standing in the high school cafeteria, well, they're not complaining, I didn't know that, but I think the power of having that word of mouth and spreading that disconnect of thinking, oh, the facilities are fine, but they're, people don't want their students standing in the lecture room, so bringing that awareness.
And that's a picture that we can show, and say, this is where it is today, and this is what it could be.
Right, and I have no idea, so, yeah, I think people need to know.
Yes, one of the advantages of bond, there's a lot of... Yes, one of the advantages of bond, there's a lot of visual aids that come with this. This is what CTE looks like. We take a picture of our old automotive shop and say, "Now, here's what the new one would look like." And just by that, you go, "I want to go to ECMP."
Well, I think that that's a really good point. One thing that I think about often is how, especially, I remember, so I went to Osceola Senior High, and the back hall was like this dark, you know, right? Okay, it was like this, you didn't want to go back there. There was fights, there was like, whatever, right? But just by opening that up, it's a different space. It has a totally different feel, and the kids' behavior in that space has changed because of that. And so, you know, I think that's a really important aspect to consider is that perceptions and feelings about how we are in our space change dramatically when we have nice and new or updated things. And I think that's really important to all aspects of our district.
Well, we talked about that last work session, that the environment to create that culture of excellence really matters, so, but making that connection for people.
I think, you know, there's one thing that kind of stuck out to me was that fifty percent financially stressed that is going to be on my mind for a while. And that's just being cognizant of asking for the moon if we don't have to. And so I, I don't even as a school board member, you know, I'm not at a place right now where I'm convinced that we need a new school building. So just, I am really wanting to soak up as much information as I can.
You haven't mentioned our changes yet.
Yeah, just wanting to soak up as much information as I can to make that determination and then also be in a place where if that is really what we need as a school board member, I can also passionately plead to the public to support it, so.
I think what we need to do for all the board members is certainly about options, that maybe leads to some of the brush fire survey testing we can do. So different ways, you know, levels of asking, right? And what we can do with, having the oversight task force can tackle some of that, to bring that number down.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, and that's what eventually as the oversight committee does its work and then the rest of the board will see all of that, that is not just what we want, it's what we need to really have the true credibility to ask. The last thing I'll add is I do think the strong historical and continued positive perceptions really is dependent on our strong systems, especially when we talk financials every time. You know, we're not in the news for up and down crazy financial situations or misspending. And so I think having those tight processes and the work everybody does is so foundational and does result in these type of outcomes for us, just board after board, year after year. It's just really important. Okay?
Board members, if you think of other questions, please, you know, if you're driving home or tomorrow, the next week, whenever, please send us a page, John, myself. We can just, just come back. I know you're gonna come up with an executive report at some point.
Yep.
We just need to keep all those questions on the radar. If you're wondering it, someone else is likely wondering it, too, right? Community special. That's all we have tonight. We're a little early, I guess.
With that, are you ready?
Stay the deep.
Okay, this work session is adjourned at seven fifty-four PM.